Every week has spoken twice to you and been to the past meetings. We have signatures of close to 400 people so against the dispensary they are willing to put their name on a petition. We have spoken to many others who are against it but can't sign due to their jobs, businesses, et cetera. We hope you will listen to the people. If you don't do anything to ban marijuana businesses, you are leaving the door open to even more in the future. Ohio has a huge opioid problem mainly because around 25 years ago, a pharmaceutical company heavily marketed Ohio first, saying their form of opioid drug was an addictive. Similar to the pharmaceutical company, marijuana big businessmen are now recruiting here in first, trying to sell us. And like the opioid crisis, it is inviting more drug dependents. Council, for the sake of our families and community, please don't fall for it. Vote to ban marijuana businesses in Huron, like so many other cities have done, keeping their cities family friendly. Again, this is not to discredit medical marijuana or the research being done, but just because something might be promising for some, doesn't mean we need to have it in our small community, especially when those that truly need it can get it close by. Methadone clinics are helpful for many, but I think you would agree, Huron is not an appropriate place for an methadone clinic. And I too believe it would be extremely hard for anyone to vote without bias if they could possibly gain monetarily from their vote. If it's legal to vote, it still isn't ethical, and I would encourage you Glenn, to recuse yourself from voting if you have that bid out. And thank you again for listening to our concerns, and I do have a question. I see in old business, you have a tabled motion, the first one by Mr. Janisi. I still don't know if that would exclude the Burger King area. Do you have an answer on that? Would it exclude the Burger King area?
We're going to have that discussion and get to that motion.
So you'll let us know at that time whether that's excluded? Okay. And then another thing, the motion on prohibiting the sale or dispensing of medical marijuana. I thought Sam, you had just said prohibited. I didn't know you had said prohibited until after we voted in the November election. Which was it?
It was that, but I'm going to make some changes, but it's still pretty much that.
Okay. Thank you.
I sent an email earlier this week, and I got a few responses. Thank you to the councilman responded. The rest of you, I hope you read it. I spent a lot of time on that, did a lot of research on the topic, you know, to present my concerns. I'm not going to read the whole letter because it's lengthy. I just want to say, you know, I agree, children should be our number one concern and consideration in this city, they're our future. I look at the American Academy of Pediatrics, who strongly opposes legalization of both recreational and medical marijuana. It states that, it goes on to state that marijuana, it's harmful to adolescents and helping their development. Uses are linked to impaired memory, concentration, interferes with learning, links to lower odds of completing high school or going on to college, alters motor control, decreases coordination and judgment, which can lead to unintentional death and injury. Mental health disorders such as addiction, anxiety, depression, and psychosis, all those things have been reported. See, you know, kids seeing parents use marijuana are more likely to use it themselves, even though parents who talk enough, actions do speak louder than words. When you desensitize marijuana and set it on the shelf, which is not the argument tonight, it's just, makes it less of a dangerous drug. And the American Academy of Pediatrics did say there are evidence where areas where there is legalization of marijuana, even limited medical dispensaries, there has led to an increase of unintended exposures to marijuana among young children, babies and toddlers who get into the cabinet and eat it or do something. And there are increases in admission to pediatric intensive care units. When I look at the research, the research is mostly on addiction, and the National Health Institute, who does the research, spent $1.1 billion on just addiction and abuse of the $1.1 billion budget that they had for marijuana, and only $297 million was spent on the research of the efficacy of drugs. So you really have to look at who is doing the research on this. You know, OPC can present whatever they want. If a private company did the research, they can come up with some pretty good results for that. So there are a lot of considerations I hope you take. But my take home is, is this is a huge unknown. We don't know how they're going to take, you know, monitor this drug. Are they, they can't do random pill counts? Are they going to do urine drug screens? How do you keep this drug off, you know, more readily available to the children than it already is? So that's a huge concern, and I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
I always get so nervous, but I feel so strongly about this.
Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Shannon Paul, and I'm at 1715 Land San Juan. And I want to show you this. This is an article, this was a full-page ad by the partnership for drug-free kids. And you see, it's a man standing at the medicine counter, and in his, in the mirror is the reflection of who? His grandfather, maybe? Taking, this is a huge problem. You know, when the, when they had the panel of experts, they're talking about security and talking about how they were going to secure this facility, it was, that's, I mean, that was to me kind of pointless. That's not how kids get their drugs. That's not how the opioid crisis happened. They got it out of the medicine cabinets. And when they talked about smokeable versus the medical marijuana, and how that's not going to be making a big distinction between that, that's really not the point either. The point is the THC content. That's the psychoactive ingredient in that. You have, you have patches now that kids are calling brain damage patches. They have 30% THC in them. You, these are prescribed for Alzheimer's and, not the 30%, but you're going to have medical marijuana prescribed for Alzheimer's and think that kids are not going to, I mean, that that person is going to be responsible for keeping track of it? Or somebody just needs cancer or something like that? Huron is a community, just like, you know, here's another one. This came out today, this is Time Magazine, with the opioid diaries. This might, this might as well be called Ohio Magazine, because 80% of this is Ohio. And it is because of the way that the highways are, it's because the traffic is, we have a perfect location for it. We have 75, 71, two that goes across, the turnpike. So you got all this perfect storm coming together, and I think we just have to all normalize that. Because to me, in that, what that guy aptly called an infomercial, I mean, they talk about cancer, you had no data, you had no statistics on cancer. Cancer, from what I read, I mean, it varies in statistics, but cancer's like 5% and it's an adjunct therapy. It's not, I mean, you know, if you're dying of cancer, you want opioids, you want painkillers. Marijuana's not a painkiller, it binds to the receptor sites. I mean, it's a perception more than a painkiller, changes that. But, and probably, I would think, from the research that I've done, probably, you know, 90% of, pretty much everybody in this room probably would not hurt from marijuana. We could all smoke it right now and probably not be damaged. But Nate here, Isaiah back there, those are the people that get into those cabinets and find those 30% patches and be, I mean, marijuana is actually more damaging, some studies say, than opioids, in that it's irreversible. And that brain damage on a young brain, some studies say, is irreversible. And we don't really have all that much information on it because it's not federally approved. And for that physician to sit up there at that vice council meeting and say it's not addictive, he may think it's not, but he's going against the whole FDA, he's going against all the research, so.
I can give you 30 seconds.
I'm done. Bye. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else? Moving on to old business. We have a motion that was tabled at the last meeting.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I moved, remove the motion I made last meeting from the table. You have to remove it from the table first.
Any discussion on the motion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Janisi?
Yes.
Shafter?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to amend that, my motion, and add the following two items to it. The first one being that, I think the easiest thing is just to reread it with the new words and then I'll say specifically the first two, those two sections.
You guys are, it's a fairly long motion. I think we have Doughty's on the voting in the agenda, if anyone didn't get that. Go ahead.
I moved that within 60 days, the planning commission develop a new section in the zoning code to regulate medical marijuana dispensary and to establish reasonable and uniform regulation regarding the location and conditions for a medical marijuana dispensary within the city. And those regulations include but not be limited to the following. Number one, designation of acceptable BU3, I-1, I-2 districts located outside of the downtown area and with access without using predominantly residential streets of thoroughfares. Two, the requirement of the city medical marijuana operating permit, whose requirements will be established with input from the police chief, the fire captain, department captains, the city's safety committee, and interested citizens. And these requirements be presented to city council for consideration and vote within 30 days. Three, a limit of one dispensary within the city. Four, and require any dispensary be at least 1,000 feet from a Huron public school. The two changes I made were, one, put 60 days that the planning commission had to come back within 60 days. The other was to make explicit what was implicit in the previous motion, that would, it would have to be away from the current site being discussed because that's within the 1,000-foot distance. In our discussions with council, that was always the intent of the motion made two weeks ago, but there are some, in the council, it wasn't clear. So the intent, in discussions in our work session, we said, okay, let's make it perfectly clear. All right? So those are, that's the amendment to the motion was to add the 60 days and also to add, increase the distance from the state's requirement to 1,000 feet instead of 500 feet. Okay? Those are the two amendments to the motion. I say it's one amendment, but it's two items.
Just for clarification, the introduction of 1,000-foot perimeter would prohibit the use from being allowed within the Burger King franchise, just for the record.
Now, in all my, I guess we rarely move to discussion, or, I'm done making my amendment. If we're moving to discussion, I'd like to just.
Is there any more discussion, Jill?
Andy, would you stand up and please say that louder? I did not, I mean, I know there's people in the back, I've sat way back there, it's hard to hear, so if you could just repeat that.
That's just, so the amended motion that's been placed on the floor this evening would include an extension from 30 days to 60 days for the due process that's required by our code to take place to the planning commission. It has a specific requirement in the motion that the planning commission make changes necessary to the code that would essentially extend the 500-foot perimeter that is currently state law to 1,000 feet, thereby prohibiting the use of a medical marijuana retail dispensary in the I-4 said location at the former Burger King. It requires the timeframe to go through the process, but essentially, this is a directive, if approved by council, would eliminate the use that you have spoken to this evening. Is that fair enough?
Sam?
Okay, this is very clear though. Based on recommendations from the planning commission, that is only a recommendation, so we could still vote that down. All right?
That's correct. It would be uncommon because it's your motion directing their action, but it is possible.
Well, if we got to vote it down, then it'd be okay in the Burger King property.
That's correct.
Laura, do you want to comment on any of this, on just the logistics or not?
Well, I guess I'll recap, because we do have some new people here this evening. Mr. Janisi's motion, I'll speak as loud as I can. Mr. Janisi's motion is twofold. It amends our zoning code to put what's called a conditional use permit on a medical marijuana dispensary business. It also amends our business regulation code to establish a new chapter regulating medical marijuana dispensaries. To be clear, it limits dispensaries in the city to one, so in the event that the applicant were to receive a license and would have a place to locate within whatever the perimeter is now extended to be, we wouldn't be having this debate again. It limits it to one. The city would be able to control any of the criminal activity that's been a main concern, the traffic, the site plan, signage, lighting, everything in two ways. We'd have a zoning code to rely upon, and we'd also be able to revoke the license for the operation. So the city would be able to summarily shut down the business if it didn't comply with the regulations. The license is also non-transferable, so whoever receives the license in the city would not be permitted to then sell their business to someone that the council didn't know. It has to stay with who it's originally given to. So that, just a little background on it, it's a twofold motion, because it gives us the planning and zoning modification, but also the additional business regulation.
Thank you.
I guess, I want to be clear. I guess I take exceptions to some comments made, and I can't help, but I tried to listen. I talk to people, and as many people are here, I also talk to people who say, well, I don't know what, I don't understand the problem. And I will tell you, I, the majority, I believe, people who have talked to me have said that to me. Now, you may disagree with that, and we can debate that, but I'm just, I want you to understand that there are also people that don't see a problem. But understand, I tried to represent, my job is also, I feel my job is also to represent, even if I perceive you are a minority, that to represent your opinions. And I sat down with different people, I know Tony Leganda was here, and we discussed what problems, what were the concerns. My perception is that the location was the greatest of all concerns, but also that this would be controlled, just in case they were not the people we thought they were. I did the best to put these into one, into the motion, and I believe I've done that. I also have to say, for point of order here, I guess, I own Wilks and Company, I'm one of the principals of Wilks and Company. We've been asked to bid on one of their facilities. I have not been rewarded, and according to the ethics laws, I'm allowed to still have a voice in this. If we get a contract, my voice is silent from that moment on. I, we have not received one. But if my voice is silent, if I have to abstain to change the current condition, is actually becomes a no, my voice becomes a no vote. So the worst thing, if you want to affect a change from the current status quo, the worst thing that can happen is for me to abstain, because I couldn't have made this motion, and I can't, couldn't vote for it. So you might perceive, I'll say my other points were at the end of the meeting, but you might perceive that I'm taking advantage of something to the fact I'm actually making it more difficult for my company to do business. And I hope that some people could appreciate that.
Any else? Clerk, please call the roll on the amended motion.
Wait, I think we have to vote on the amendment and then on the motion, correct?
Yeah, you have the.
So you haven't voted on the amendment?
He had, call the vote on the amendment.
He said amended motion.
Right. This is calling a vote on the amendment that he's made to his motion.
So vote on the amendment and then.
It's adding those two lines.
And we'll come back and vote on the motion.
Janisi?
Yes.
Shafter?
No.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
I'm going to abstain, we will come.
Dyke?
Yes.
And Artino?
Yes.
Okay, so the amended motion has passed now, or, the granting of the amendment has passed. Now you need to call final vote on, on the motion as amended.
Okay, so now the vote is on the motion as amended.
That's correct.
Okay. Final vote is, Janisi?
Yes.
Shafter?
No.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
I'm staying.
Dyke?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Moving on, another tabled motion from the February 13 meeting by Mr. Artino, we have a motion to bring it off the table. Any discussion?
Artino?
Yes.
Janisi?
No. I'm sorry, yes, we're taking them off.
Okay. Shafter?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to make some changes to mine, I think it'd be easier if I assume that and just rework the motion.
Yeah, refer to Laura.
Motion to rescind.
We can make a motion to rescind this previous one as opposed to amending it.
So there's a motion to rescind the previous motion on the table, any discussion? Let's move to the roll.
Artino?
Yes.
Janisi?
Yes.
Shafter?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
I'd like to order in legislation introducing a moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries and present valid language by the city for a vote in November by our citizens.
So any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Shafter?
Ordering legislation means we're going to vote the next meeting. That's my concern. I'd like to just take a straight up vote on this, but. Then, then, suggestion, don't order in legislation. Did I just make a motion to, Laura's saying I have?
You have to. So what he's suggesting is a legislative change, which is a moratorium, a temporary prohibition. That's not something that has to be referred to the planning commission, because it's not a zoning change. But it is legislation, and it would be codified. We would bring it to you in an ordinance. So if he, he's making a motion to order in the ordinance, which this, if, if the motion passes, the city would, would bring to council at the next council meeting.
So we're going to vote at the next meeting there? So, so that's, that's my concern, is that tonight is not the final vote.
Two weeks. Is that your intent?
No, it's not my intent. I'd like to strike a vote tonight. I don't know how to do that.
You have to have legislation. That legislation, it isn't in front of you. It's not on your agenda, it's not published, it's not even written. It has to be, it has to be brought to you soon. And we, we do this in previous meetings, where the council orders in legislation, and we bring it to you in your next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, just, your other motion didn't order in legislation. Right. If you strike that, when we go back to where you were before. Well, and you wanted to change the language and go back to the law, director's telling me I can't. I would love to just keep that motion as it was, only to read that city present the valid language on behalf of the citizens. That's what I really want. I don't want to come back in two weeks and have everybody.
But we've already voted to rescind that motion. So can, can a new motion be made with the, without ordering in legislation?
It's, no, it's still the same effect, because a moratorium cannot be effective unless it's codified in an ordinance.
All right, well, I guess we'll have to see what happens in two weeks.
Restate the, Mr. Vice Mayor, can we restate this?
Order the legislation introducing a moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries and present valid language by the city for the, for the election in November, for the citizens to vote.
Any further discussion?
Questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is November, can it be voted on in August?
No, it has to be in a general election for the revised vote.
So we proved this, it can't sell until after the vote, when we're, it gets passed, right?
Correct. Correct. This is just a motion to have the legislation brought in. You voted on, yes.
Well, can we have?
You know, Mr. Vice Mayor, just if I may, I'm sorry, you caught me a little bit off guard. The initiative petition that was originally discussed by the citizens, that's required to be on in the general election. So I, I want to, I want to be clear in my response. Mr. Shafter, you asked if Sam's, the ordinance that he's talking about, if that can be voted on in a special election, I think I answered you too quick. I will certainly research it, it very well could be brought at a, at a special election like a.
In August?
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't want to answer too quick, so just point of clarification. If it's an initiative petition, we're referring, that has to go to a general election for the revised vote. But I can get you an answer on that.
It's not going to be easy. I'll amend it to bring a vote as soon as possible.
And if I could, just for the benefit of the public that's in attendance, the, the application as legislation is required for due process notification, so that those individuals who may not be in attendance tonight are afforded the opportunity to have this advertised as part of a regular agenda of city council, talking about specifically binding dollars for the placement of that issue, and that is required to be passed by legislative process, which does require the notice period so that someone wouldn't feel disenfranchised.
And that can be done by March 13.
I think we, we'll put together a summarization of the options to put that to a vote. Obviously, to answer Mr. Artino's concerns, it would behoove everybody to move the vote up to access the popular vote as soon as possible, and not wait until a general ballot issue that would be required at the end of the year.
Any further discussion?
Okay, Artino?
Yes.
Janisi?
No.
Shafter?
Yes.
Crawford?
No.
Hardy?
Yes.
And Dyke?
Yes.
That motion failed.
In my opinion, that motion did not fail. I question that, at least in our charter, it allows for the majority of the quorum.
No, I can address it now. Mr. Artino had suggested to me, the question being, for the benefit of the audience, the question being, majority of the body versus majority of the quorum present? Our charter and our, and our ordinances address quorum for resolution and a quorum for certain levels of motions, but not for final passage of motions. It's certainly an issue that we can get a separate opinion on. Mr. Artino, his perspective was that it was a majority of the quorum, as opposed to my opinion, which is a majority of the. as opposed to my opinion, which is a majority of the body. We can, we can get a separate legal opinion from an outside individual to give council some recognition of that. And I'll try and get that done for the next meeting.
Can I get a independent counsel?
It's an issue appearing in front of a board, so I will tell you the rules of professional conduct. Tell attorneys they're not to advise members of a board on issues appearing before that board, when the board's otherwise represented. We can get a, I'll put together a written request for a legal opinion and certify it to city council so you can see it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, resolution two thousand eight, or do we wanna, do we wanna take a break?
Let's keep rolling.
All right, we'll move on to resolution two thousand eighteen dash nine.
Shocker?
Any discussion on the motion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Crawford?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke?
Dyke?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Janicey?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the state pricing proposal and authorize the purchase of a two thousand eighteen Ford F-250 for the Parks and Recreation Department from Artino Ford in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
Mayor and members of council, refer you to the resolution two thousand eighteen dash nine, executive summary. This piece of equipment was provided for and appropriated with funds part of the two thousand eighteen budget. We have three specific bids. We are recommending award to the local Artino Ford in the amount of twenty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. The differential of ninety-nine dollars between that and Matthew's Ford is insignificant considering context and location. I would recognize Mr. Steinberg, who is in attendance tonight, to speak about the efficacy of the piece of equipment, but it's time for replacement. Council's already provided for its cost, two thousand eighteen budget. Doug?
Just to answer any questions, the city, city manager stated correctly, the three bids going to Artino Ford, a hundred dollars. Just transitioning out our, our vehicles that are over thirteen years old, like one of fourteen years, and getting a new one equipped to plow parking lots and.
Sam? I, I stated this two weeks ago, I'll remind folks that this is my brother, Artino Ford. I've got a ruling on this a long time ago from the Ethics Commission, because my brother doesn't give me a dime. I identify, do not benefit from this, I'm allowed to vote on this.
Thank you, any other discussion? The clerk, please call the roll.
Shocker?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke? Artino?
Yes.
Janicey?
Yes.
Moving on, resolution two thousand eighteen dash ten.
Mr. Mayor? I move that resolution two thousand eighteen dash ten, place on its third first reading and re-reading rule. Wave their three reading rule? Sorry.
Any discussion on the motion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy? Dyke?
Yes.
Janicey?
Yes.
Shocker?
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement confirming the joint acquisition, operation, and/or maintenance of recreational facilities and an agreement for the operation and maintenance of such facilities and programs established by the Huron Joint Recreation Program.
Mr. White? I would like to address resolution two thousand eighteen again in the executive summary. And since we have members from the school board and Huron Township trustees, I'd like to extend our thanks to you. Through the Huron Joint Rec District, I believe the city of Huron provides the most superior quality of recreation services anywhere around. We've been working together as a triumvirate for several years now. This contract comes up annually and is supported by an initial subsidy from the city's general fund. In two thousand and eighteen, that subsidy is required to be two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, which equates to sixty-five percent of the operating budget. That entail draws a draw, twenty-five percent from the Huron Township trustees equals to eighty-five thousand six twenty-five and from the school district of thirty-four thousand two hundred fifty for roughly three hundred forty-two thousand. Great partnership that we have and want to recognize Doug and the staff for the work that you guys do in the community. And again, to the township and the schools for working.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Janicey?
Yes.
Doug?
Moving on to resolution two thousand eighteen dash eleven. Mr. Artino?
I move that the three reading will be suspended in resolution two thousand eighteen dash eleven.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Artino? Janicey?
Yes.
Shocker?
Crawford? Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal and enter into an agreement with Gilbert Heating and Air Conditioning for the provision of labor and materials relating to heating and air conditioning repair services and units for the city of Huron in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand six hundred and seven dollars and zero cents.
If you would take a look again at two thousand eighteen eleven resolution summary, this is an initiative that was established by council in two thousand seventeen. Prior to that, we had discussed it in two thousand sixteen, taking a walk through the various systems of city hall buildings, there are several in need of repair. The two thousand eighteen budget had appropriated fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of HVAC equipment. We have requested your approval of this amount of thirty-eight thousand six oh seven from Gilbert Heating. Mr. Green is in the audience all the way in the back, if you had anything you'd like to add to that?
This will cover, we got races going. This will cover replacement of rooftop units in this building, unit heaters in the fire station, the water heater for city hall, wall units in the police department radio room, doctor cleaning throughout city hall, and we were able to include replacement of the split system HVAC at the street department, we're still on our, we don't want it.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Artino?
Yes.
Janicey?
Yes.
Shocker?
Crawford? Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Moving on to resolution two thousand eighteen dash twelve. Mr. Janicey?
I move that the three reading, the three reading will be suspended in resolution two thousand eighteen dash twelve, be placed on its first reading.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Janicey?
Yes.
Shocker?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
A resolution acknowledging the mandatory contributions required to be paid under section seven forty-two point three one of the Ohio Revised Code for participating employees of the city of Huron Fire Department who are members of the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund.
This summary can be provided for resolutions twenty eighteen, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. They are relative to collective bargaining agreements that the city has established with the internal order of police and the IFF. The third is an extension passed on to the administrative executive head of the police department. And essentially it set the pension obligations of the city, these amounts have been appropriated as part of the two thousand eighteen budget and have already been approved. Laura, if you touch base on the specifics?
The only other thing that I'll add on this is that previously, previous collective bargaining agreements, we have participated in an additional pension pickup in both the police and the fire departments as part of the collective bargaining agreement for two thousand eighteen, the extension passed for both all three unions by council, that pension pickup went away. So we're relying strictly on the statutory pension amounts, the city's not picking up anything additional. So we've done these same resolutions in years past, the pension fund actually requires city council to pass a separate piece of legislation denoting what the pension contribution is. So you'll see the breakdown for, it's a slightly different between FOP and the IFF, simply because statutorily they get different rates. But other than that, we're not picking up anything in addition, it's just statutory and it's required by the fund.
Thank you, any, any more discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Janicey?
Yes.
Shocker?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Artino?
Moving on to resolution two thousand eighteen dash thirteen. Mr. Shocker?
Mr. Mayor, I move the three reading, the suspended resolution two thousand eighteen dash ten, be placed on its first reading.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Shocker?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Janicey?
A resolution acknowledging the mandatory contributions required to be paid under section seven forty-two point three one of the Ohio Revised Code for participating employees of the city of Huron Police Department who are members of the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund.
Mr. White? This is a, this is a carryover from the last discussion.
Right, and further, this is just the FOP portion.
Only that this is specifically for the FOP.
Counsel, any, any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Shocker?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Janicey?
Moving on to resolution two thousand eighteen dash fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution two thousand eighteen dash fourteen, the three reading will be suspended and this motion placed on its first reading.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy? Dyke?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Janicey?
Yes.
Shocker?
A resolution acknowledging the mandatory contributions required to be paid under section seven forty-two point three one of the Ohio Revised Code for the chief of police of the city of Huron who is a member of the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund.
Last one regarding the police chief, are there any further discussion on this motion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy? Dyke?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Janicey?
Yes.
Shocker?
Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash six.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Artino?
I move that for a supermajority, that six being placed on its first reading and the three reading will be suspended.
Any discussion on that motion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Artino?
Yes.
Janicey?
Abstained.
Shocker?
Abstained.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed four million dollars of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of improving the municipal electric system by constructing a new substation, together with all necessary appurtenances and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor, I move that, ordinance two thousand eighteen dash six, be placed as an emergency measure.
Any discussion?
Procedurally, I would just point out, because this is presented as an emergency, it does require a supermajority of five votes as opposed to four. Well, this, the motion, I believe the first motion was appropriate.
The motion, the first motion was an inter, you have procedural motions and then you have final passage. So if you have a conflict on the final passage, that's understandable. I won't challenge that, the procedural yeah, I think you can still vote on a procedural motion, but abstaining on the final passage. But that's up to council. If, if you don't have five votes, then it just goes into effect in thirty days.
I got us.
Mr. Mayor? Just, Laura? I can, I'll vote for the majority.
That, that's, it's your vote, it's your call.
Any more discussion?
I understand whether how you can vote. Abstain one time for the same motion. Same issue, but go ahead.
Any more discussion? The clerk, please call the roll.
Artino?
Yes.
Janicey?
Abstained.
Shocker?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. White? The ordinance itself calls for an amount not to exceed of four million dollars. This has gone through the finance committee, it has been approved for presentation to the council. Various components of the infrastructure have already been put in place, the city's received a grant of two hundred thousand dollars from Jobs Ohio to initiate the process. We have most recently gone out to bid and we come in several hundred thousand dollars beneath. In consultation with our finance council, we're issuing notes due to the low cost interest over a twelve month period. Those notes upon completion of the project would then be converted into a bond, is not anticipated this amount would be utilized. But conservatively, finance committee has put forth a ten-year payment plan and the budgets going forward will include those amounts to be paid from enterprise revenues collected within the electric facility fund, from Moochie Farms, but also Ohio Patient's Choice within the corporate park and the other several entities. It's expected to generate several hundred thousand dollars per year in the first phases of development and swell to over a million. So it comes before you properly. There is a requirement to adopt as an emergency in order to accommodate bid advertisements and to order equipment necessary to basically electrify the substation in conjunction with the September two thousand eighteen timeline that we've been discussing. I'll take any questions.
Mr. Artino?
Mr. White, can you explain a little more about the emergency? We gotta go through the process for annexation, so everybody understands.
Yeah, essentially the the program that's being talked about right now is generating a benefit for one end user, Moochie Farms, out of Canada, located now domestically for the first time in the United States. In order to company United States and to company Huron in particular, they wished to be a component of Huron Public Power. Huron Public Power exists to provide wholesale consumption to large end users. In this particular instance, there was a need to have electricity available from eleven PM to seven AM from October to April, when there's a large supply available. The only way that the company could have that power from the city was to be a component part of the city. So over the last year and a half, two years, they worked through a very slow and arduous process at the state to become a component part of the city. That process is finalized, we're expecting some paperwork to be filed this week. And now that that has taken as long as it has, it is required, if the city would like to meet its expectation, which we have told them we would accommodate, we are passing this by emergency in order to begin to order and construct the substation that will be benefiting the end user. But as a redundancy, it will also serve existing customers within the park. For that reason, these parts are large, they have a long order, they need to be ordered now, and the work has begun. I hope that satisfies your question.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Artino?
Yes.
Janicey?
Abstained.
Shocker?
Abstained.
Crawford?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Moving on to city managers' discussion.
Counsel, I just have one item for consideration, I would like to address the law director specific to its content, but we do request an executive session?
We do. Mr. Vice Mayor, we would, the administration requests an executive session for the purpose of discussing pending or imminent court action. There very well may be legislation or action following the meeting, so just, so the public's aware. We would have to close, obviously, the doors for the executive, but.
Mayor's discussion, just real quick, again, there's a lot of passion, there's a lot of emotion in this room tonight. I just wanna again thank everyone for being professional and being respectful of the process. Mr. Shocker, do we get any order?
I have nothing.
Nothing.
I want to say I apologize for the past two meetings and not being able to make it, I had a word commitment. So I had, I had an opportunity to talk to many people in the community regarding the issue of medical marijuana dispensaries. I've listened to a lot of that, I am proud of a lot of you people to have to vote to this topic, so I will be voting yes to Sam's. And I hope that the others will, you know, give that opportunity to the people that put us in this seat. So, thank you for coming, thank you for your professionalism, and I can tell you, I assure you that I am listening, so thank you.
Mr. Artino?
I, I'd like to apologize, I sure think that in an effort to help remedy this situation, this should have been given the opportunity to come to a vote and given our citizens a chance to voice their opinion. So I feel bad that my motion apparently did not pass. The other thing I'd like to ask is, I'm on the planning commission and we meet tomorrow night. Is there any way this could be, Mr. Janisi's motion could be brought forward by tomorrow night?
That's our...
Yeah, that's our turn. Will I read one?
It will be heard with the recreational prohibition.
Okay. Mr. Janisi?
I had, I had comments to make, but I'm gonna treat them like the email you write and then you believe instead of...
Okay. If there's nothing further, the staff has asked for an executive session for, for potential litigation. There could be action following the executive session. What we gotta do now is get the room closed off and have everyone, if you wanna stick around, you'll have to wait outside because we're gonna take the session. Thank you.